Good evening. Can everyone hear me? Excellent. All right. Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the December 9th, 2024, School Board Meeting to order. The Holman Board of Education and the School District of Holman acknowledge that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk, Sauk, and Fox in Dakota peoples. We celebrate and honor these lands and their sacred significance to indigenous peoples. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Stacy, could you please call the roll?
Kevan Zulki.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Adija Islam.
Excused.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Need.
Here.
Maggie Smith.
Excused.
Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wench.
Here. Right with five of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Bridget has second. To approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. And this evening, we do have public participation. So I will call on those registered to address the board relative to an agenda item or an item that did not reach resolution through Policy 9130 at this time. Public participants will state their name, address, and affiliation with the item addressed. Public participation is limited to three minutes per person. A total of 15 minutes has been allotted for the public participation portion of the meeting. I ask those present to respect the rights of others wishing to speak by refraining from interrupting them. According to Board Policy 167.3, citizens are expected to use proper etiquette, decorum, and respect when addressing the board. I remind speakers that they are not immune from legal consequences related to the content of their speech. In recognition of the privacy rights of individuals and employees of the district, the Board of Education prohibits any public comment on individual employees, students, or constituents of the district, and on matters in which an employee, student, or constituent may be identified or inferred from the comments. Please refer to Policy 167.3, public comments at board meetings, for additional information. So tonight, I welcome Pat Barlow to speak.
Assume the green light means this is on.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time. Patrick Barlow, 907 Dana Lane. I am a parent in the district, taxpayer in the district, and I noticed with interest your item related to a budget, possible budget resolution or resolution to add a potential referendum for ongoing exceeding of the tax levy for important reasons, obviously. I am very appreciative of the board and the administration to address that deficit that you do have, likely due to many reasons, the very convoluted funding formula in the state of Wisconsin, a very inconsistent state funding, and as your own position paper stated, the per pupil rate hasn't kept up with inflation, and we're $11 million in the hole just because of that issue. The question I have is, we know that this, the resolution says this is for a period of five years. We know that magically, our expenses will not end in five years. So it's a question that I will be eagerly anticipating your discussion later in the meeting, but considering that maybe there should be a recurring referendum. Obviously, I know you've spent time, you've had staff time, look at this issue very in depth, but my concern is, moving forward, public sentiment in five years, that may change greatly, and having something long-term to meet your needs is very critical. Perhaps you have a larger logic here, maybe that's true, that you're waiting to keep some flexibility, so in five years, you may need more dollars. That could be very well so. But just would want you to consider that, a recurring referendum to meet those needs. The other thing we all are aware of is somewhat that the Act 10 ruling came out last week, but being also in public office, that's a concern potentially, if you need to reopen negotiations with bargaining groups, with staff. I think we're way too early to tell about the actual impact of that, but within five years, we will know. And keeping the district's flexibility to be able to deal with some of those issues is also critical. So therefore, something more recurring, longstanding, may make sense. But I encourage your efforts. Thank you for your attention to this important issue, and definitely, we need to find ways to more sustainably fund the district and to keep good staff and to meet our operational needs. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the district administrators' report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I have two items tonight. One, I just wanted to invite all of those to go down to the Pump House downtown La Crosse, and all of our elementary students, we have art displayed down there, and they will have a reception starting, held on December 11th. And then also, Evergreen Elementary, Prairie View, Sand Lake, and Viking Elementarys, along with Holman Middle School, have been named 2025 Best U.S. Schools by U.S. News and World Reports. We're just very proud of this, and this recognition reflects the dedication and hard work of our students and our staff across the district. So I just want to say congratulations to them for that. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to reports and discussion. Item 8.1. I welcome the Holman High School Entrepreneurship Class to present on this year's Model Store. This item is for report only.
All right. Well, we can see we have good enrollment in this course. All right.
This should be, you may need to turn on a gun.
Hello?
Show me off.
Welcome, everyone. Our Model Store this year is Blizzard Boulevard, brought to you by QuickTrip. The weather outside is frightful, but the store is so delightful.
First of all, we want to say thank you to our sponsors. First of all, we have QuickTrip, obviously, the naming rights, and we have platinum, gold, silver, and bronze sponsors, our two biggest platinum sponsors being Howie and the Insurance Center. There are also some sponsors that are not listed on this page.
A big shout out to Train. They helped a lot. They helped fund half of our sweatshirt costs. They also donated some items for the store, and they helped out a lot in general. And then, a big thank you to our vendors. We have it all listed up on the screen right there. Yeah. They brought in a bunch of goods, holiday crafts, a bunch of good stuff in the store.
Thank yous within the district. First of all, we have Travis Judell, obviously, the social media manager at the district, for making the promotional video as well as other things around the store. Our custodial staff for helping us set up the store. Mr. Reagan for helping with various things such as banners and signs. The Holman High School Administration for helping out, as well as all the district staff who have helped.
Then our mission statement is, our mission and goal at Blizzard Boulevard is to support Jax Springleson. And Jax is an active community member who works at the Insurance Center in Onalaska, and when he's not working, he volunteers his time at Holman High School for the football team. And our plan is not just to raise money, but to educate staff, students, and community members through our store. We at Blizzard Boulevard dedicate time and energy while involving our community to create a positive impact on a community member.
Some more about Jax Springleson. He was a Wortburg College football alumni, a Holman football volunteer coach. He has a girlfriend and a very loving family who care for him. He was diagnosed with germ cell cancer at 25 years old. Cancer was found in lymph nodes and spread to his brain. He went through three months of the strongest chemotherapy, for five days a week for six hours. He is now in recovery from intensive surgery, and he has remained faithful and keeps fighting every day.
And then, our store hours on Wednesday, we have a 2:00 to 3:00 PM teachers' hours or staff. You guys can come if you guys want. There'll be some goodies, some treats for you guys to eat. And then, 3:00 to 8:00, we're open, but then 6:00 to 8:00 is our grand opening, starting at 6:00. And then on Thursday, we're open 3:00 to 7:00, Friday 3:00 to 7:00, and then Saturday, 9:00 to 2:00.
About our entrepreneurship class, we have 25 seniors that have completed three prerequisites in order to participate in this class. Every year around this time, our class is in charge of creating a model store at Holman High School. During our time in marketing classes over the past few years, we have learned many valuable skills that are now being put to the test in real life to help raise money for a good cause.
And for our store managers is me, Brayden, Dylan Whittaker, who is not here today, and then Drew Rip. Then our tasks are to oversee groups and departments, reach out to sponsors and vendors, create fundraising events, contact administration, and provide the best outcome for our store and our recipient.
Hello. My name is Weston. I'm the manager of sales, and my team consists of Jonathan Groves, Tristan Hansen, Spencer Gault, who was not able to make us make it here, and Gavin Solberg. And we contact businesses for potential merchandise and potential sponsors, develop a sales incentive program, and create training videos for the class.
Hi. My name is Jen Rink. I'm the manager of operations. We have North in our group, Keenan, and Parker. Our tasks are to develop inventory control system, price and mark merchandise, order new clothing, create employee sweatshirts, and train employees.
My name's Natalie. My team consists of Sam, Henry, Kieven, and Annalisa, and we've been working on creating banners and posters, stickers and magnets, and then we've been working on promotional activities and creating invitations for the grand opening, and then also planning the grand opening.
My name is Paul Gorel. I'm the manager of HR. We have Kyle, Daniel, and Xavier. We develop employee handbook, the schedule, handoff complaints, and store evaluations.
My name's Jessica, and I am the manager of Interactive Media, and also in my department is Landry, Heidi, and Erin. And what we do is we promote the store on all social media platforms, which include Instagram, TikTok, and Facebook. And then we promote at different sporting events, and then we communicate with parents, students, and different community members on store details and the opening night.
And the weather outside is frightful, but our store is so delightful. We hope to see you all at Blizzard Boulevard's grand opening ceremony, brought to you by QuickTrip on Wednesday at 6:00.
And this is our video link, made by Travis Judell.
Julie, you got to verify yourself.
Yeah. We'll sign in.
That's you. I don't know why. Probably because you signed in earlier.
It should not be me. I'm not logged in. But that's okay. What?
Login.
Shouldn't be me, though.
There we go. There we go.
Hello, everyone. We're thrilled to welcome you to Holman High School's Blizzard Boulevard, a beacon of hope, compassion, and entrepreneurship. This year, our student-run store is not just about spreading holiday cheer, it's about making a real impact on the life of someone who needs it most. Meet Jax Springleson, a beloved coach and mentor in our community. At just 25 years old, Coach Jax was diagnosed with cervical cancer. Over the past few months, he's shown incredible strength through months of chemotherapy. On his last day of chemo, doctors discovered a blood clot on the right side of his heart and lung. Recently, he underwent extensive surgery to remove lymph nodes and is now on the road to recovery. Jax is more than just a coach. He's a source of inspiration and resilience to us all. This year, Blizzard Boulevard is more than just a store. It's a mission. We're raising funds to help support Jax on his medical journey, reminding him that he's not alone in this fight.
At Holman High School, our entrepreneurship model store goes beyond theory. It's about action and heart. Blizzard Boulevard is a testament to our dedication to making a real difference.
Jax's story of perseverance and courage inspired us to step up to create Blizzard Boulevard to support him in his fight. This is our chance to step up to support someone who has done so much for our community.
From holiday decor to handmade crafts and delicious treats, Blizzard Boulevard offers a wide range of goodies. Every purchase directly supports Jax's medical journey, helping to ease the financial burden he's facing.
We can't do this without you, Holman community. Come shop with us, spread the word, and help us make this holiday season unforgettable for Coach Jax. Together, we can make a lasting impact.
Join us at Holman High School's Blizzard Boulevard, where every purchase is a gift of hope, every sale is an act of kindness, and together, we can make a difference. Let's show Jax the strength of our community this holiday season.
Holman High School's Blizzard Boulevard. The weather outside is frightful, but the store is so delightful.
Happy holidays, everyone.
That's awesome.
And just thank you all for your support, and I'd hope to see you this coming days of the week.
All right.
All right. Thank you all.
Awesome. Thank you for coming.
Look forward to seeing you Wednesday.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Kieven.
Nice job. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 8.2. DECA officers will now provide their annual report to the board. This item is for report only.
You can stand over by the table if you want. That's fine. So you can do your PowerPoint, too. That works.
Good evening, board. We are the Holman DECA Officer Team, and today, we're going to be sharing a little bit more about what our organization is. So within a high school, DECA is our career technical student organization, so we're preparing our emerging leaders in marketing, finance, hospitality, and tourism.
My name is North Cox, and I joined DECA in order to better apply the skills I learned in the classroom in real life.
My name is Miley Ballsley. I mainly joined DECA because my sister was involved in high school, and I was interested in traveling and business.
Sophia Coon is not here with us today.
Oh, I'm Haley Miller, and I joined DECA to meet a bunch of new people and just to learn a little bit more about what I might want to do in my future.
And my name is Carson Schmidt. I'm a junior, and I joined DECA because I was jealous of all the people that got to go to Florida when I was a freshman.
My name is Tegan Nelson, and I joined DECA because I love meeting good people and I love to compete on competition.
And then, of course, our advisors in the back, Ms. Pressky, Ms. Osgood, and Ms. Hesler, who is not here with us.
Our Holman DECA chapter was established in 1974 and is one of the largest DECA chapters in the nation. And at Holman High School, we offer the, some of the few classes, marketing and business concepts, advanced marketing, sports and entertainment marketing, entrepreneurship, retail marketing, and market research.
Some, just some of our activities that we've done so far this year. We've done breakfast socials, both with the students at the Holman High School, going over what it's like to be a DECA member, all the things we do with them, as well as we did do a breakfast social at the Holman Area Community Center for all of the seniors in our community, where we served them breakfast and gave them kind of an idea of what DECA is and its role in the community. We did also put on the homecoming dance back in September, which everyone really enjoyed. DECA was a big part of planning the event, setting it up, and taking it down, and overall, it was a really good event. Recently, a lot of our competitors just got back from their kind of more for leisure New York City trip, where they went to the Statue of Liberty, went to Broadway, and experienced all the culture that the city has to offer. And we do also offer a lot of competition meetings, as well as prep sessions, to really help our competitors get prepared for the season, as we are starting on January 11th, I do believe it is, at the DECA District's competition. And then, at the Omni Center recently, back in November, we held an open skate night, where anyone in DECA would be able to get in for free and just have to pay for the skates, and people really enjoyed that. And then, as was just discussed with Blizzard Boulevard, on Wednesday, DECA is putting on the Model Store's grand opening, which is going to be really exciting, and we're going to raise a lot of money. And then, later on in the year, the sports marketing class is going to be put on the annual event Dancing with the Sports Stars, to combine the dance team and the football team in order to raise money for a person in need in the community.
Very similar to what North said, we do host a lot of community service activities for students at our high school. We have the Senior Citizen Homecoming Breakfast, where we host at the BGC most often, and we have senior citizens come in for breakfast. We have trick or treats so others can eat, that we raise non-perishable food items for our community. We have our Coat Drive, which was very successful this year. We also have Dancing with the Sports Stars, which will be happening in the spring this year. And then, again, our Entrepreneurship Model Store, which you just heard all about.
And then, throughout the DECA competition season, students attend three different leadership development conferences. So first, on January 11th at UW Stout, students will attend the District's conference, and then state qualifiers will move on to Lake Geneva from February 23rd through the 26th. And then, competitors who show up at state will have the opportunity to attend internationals in Orlando, Florida, from April 25th through the 29th.
Holman DECA is on a few social media platforms. We're currently on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, although we are mostly active on our Facebook and Instagram.
So as you can imagine, bringing all of our competitors around to Lake Geneva and this year, Orlando, Florida, for all the time we do, it costs a lot of money. So right here are some of our highest rated income sources. So before the, before the District's conference, actually, we run our packet raffle tickets. We have a flower sale to fund our competitors for ICDC, that being our International Career Development Conference. We have all of our various business sponsors. Our homecoming dance and the sale of the homecoming shirts raise a lot of money, as well as our school store and vending, and Ultra Federal Credit Union makes a lot of contributions to our chapter. So then, right on the next slide, we have a list of all of our chapters and their brands listed in diamond, gold, and blue categories. So because Ultra contributes so much to our chapter, we want to give them a special shout out. So one of the most impactful things that they do for us is they partner with our advanced marketing class to do back-to-school promotion. You might have seen it during registration. We have groups in our advanced marketing classes make projects centered around a topic each year, and they host it. I think the project that won this year is actually one of our officers, Teagan, so you'll see that at the, at the next registration. So they spend a lot of time in our classrooms. They, they have our Ultra Wall that you can see in that picture. They put up TVs. They have our charging stations in the commons, and they do just a whole lot for our chapter, and we'd love to give them a special thank you.
And kind of tying into the Ultra thank you there is the Moon Mug. The Ultra Wall is actually in the Viking locker room, which is the adjacent school store, but the Moon Mug is our food service, school-based enterprise that we do through DECA. It's currently gold certified, meaning that one of our students has submitted a project on a bunch of different standards that just proves that we put a lot of effort into the store and that it's very successful for the chapter. And the Moon Mug itself is a partnership between the marketing/DECA department and the special education department, where we have members of DECA working during the lunch periods and before and after school in order to serve our students and raise money for the chapter. And during certain class periods, like job skills, daily living skills, and those other classes in the special education department, Mrs. Frame and a bunch of other teachers, they help teach people with special needs, job skills, food service in the Moon Mug. And like I said earlier, is located right next to the Viking locker room in the HHS school store. And yeah, it's just really good for giving all students, both in the special education department as well as DECA, really good work experience that they can apply to the real world, and is open during all three lunches.
Next, we're going to talk just a little bit about our impact of Holman DECA on our students. So really, our big goal is to prepare our students for the future in leadership and community service, as well as communication. And a huge part of Holman DECA is just, and just DECA in general, is all the networking opportunities and meeting those other members of DECA, finding more about what we might be interested in in our post-secondary plans, and just meeting a whole bunch of other officers and chapter members from all over, pretty much everywhere.
And we just want to thank you for all of your support, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
All right. Any questions? I don't think we do. No. That was very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 8.3. Information and Technology Director Kathleen Stefani will now present on a limited-term Fine Arts Center Technical Support Position. This item will appear on tonight's consent agenda.
Good evening. Since the addition of our Fine Arts Center, we've seen an increase in requests for using it, and these rentals are from various outside companies such as dance companies, show choir, gospel choir, symphonies, and they often require advanced skills for setting up the sound just the way that they need, so they can have the best performances, as well as the light. Sometimes, there is customized scenes, and due to all the advanced needs that they have, as well as the intricacies of the equipment, we are asking for a limited-term employee, up to two technicians, to be able to support this. And these would not be permanent, regular positions. The hours would be as needed, for $20 an hour, and there aren't any benefits associated with these positions. So to fund this, we're hoping for a no-cost solution in that the, we would look at the rental fee structure of those, of groups, so they would be able to rent the facility, and then we would be able to provide a technician that has that AV background for a theater that can deliver what they are asking for. This is new, so we would kind of give it this year to kind of see how it's going, and then reevaluate as needed. Do you have any questions regarding this?
No questions. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 8.4. Executive Director of Student Services Jill Mason will now present the Limited Term Educational Assistant for Special Education position. This item will appear on tonight's consent agenda.
Excuse me. We have a lot of students at Evergreen who have transitioned to us from other school districts this fall, and so we've spent the, the first couple months of the school year really trying to get to know our students, and found that we need some extra support for our students who have not only transitioned to us, but we have some students who are newly evaluated that need some support. So we are asking for a limited-term Special Education Assistant, and we'll reevaluate that at the end of the school year, as we do with all of our staffing, to see if we continue to need that for the following year. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 8.5. Dr. Mueller, Jill Mason, and Holman Public Preschool Administrator Sue Eitland will now present the 4K Transition to our Elementary Schools. This item will appear on tonight's consent agenda.
Great. Good evening. I'm going to start with this and then hand it over here to the Jill and Sue. Historically, actually, the 4K program, when it began, was actually called the Early Learning Center, and it was located out in the Oak Grove Building and that. And then it transitioned over to become a program in, more in the Village area here, but closer to our school district home base, I guess you could say, and also took place in some daycares in the community and some of And also took place in some daycares in the community and some of our schools. And then it transitioned after that into being mainly at Viking and Prairie View. And from each year to year, depending on availability in our schools, our program would be relocated between those buildings, the Prairie View and Viking Elementary. And actually, at that time, a lot of the equipment was stored out at Oak Grove. And then the teaching staff would spend their time setting their classrooms up in that year after year. So then, the past, most recently, in the past years, we were able and very fortunate to have the 4K program located in the Viking Elementary so that we had all of the programming there. So that's kind of the history of our 4K programming. Then during the spring of 2017, NEXUS did the Comprehensive District Ride Facility Assessment. And that assessment included walkthroughs of our buildings and then we had survey data from staff and input from the leadership. The full report was presented in the fall of 2017. The buildings and grounds, along with the Finance Committee, made recommendations to the school board on next steps from the assessment in the spring of 2020, which led to our referendum that we're seeing most of this building work being done and happening right now. And so the plans from that were developed, showed enough capacity for 4K to be located at each of our elementary schools. So with that, the 4K program will transition from having 4K classrooms and programming at Viking Elementary School to having 4K in each elementary school. So this change will start at the beginning of our twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And at that time, the completion of our remodel in all of our elementary schools will be close to, we're hoping our goal is at the start of the school year, the majority of all the remodel and construction work will be done in the playgrounds, because we still have a playground to complete at Evergreen and site work and that. And this change will promote early learning within each of our elementary neighborhood communities and provide more equitable access to support our, for our youngest learners.
Okay, and so we will have registration in January and or February. We're working with Joni to figure out when exactly we'll open up the application for that. And then school placement, so because all, 4K will be in all four elementaries, school placement will be based on where you would go 4K through five. So we're going to start that in 4K. So if you live in the Sand Lake boundaries, you would, your child in 4K would go to Sand Lake. However, we know that many children in 4K go to daycares. And so if a family isn't able to either have them ride the bus or get transportation to the homeschool and let's say they go to daycare over in the Prairie View boundary, we would be able to have them attend Prairie View for 4K and then come back to Sand Lake 4K. So we'll be working through that. That's going to be new for us. So we'll be working through some of those types of decisions. What we're really hoping is that our 4K students can ride the regular bus route to the elementary schools in the morning and then ride home on the regular route in the afternoon. That will reduce, we think, maybe four bus routes for our Transportation Department. So we, we've been working really closely with them and we'll continue to do that. Let's see. Our schedule will be for AM session, for two of our schools will be eight-thirty to eleven and the other two, eight-forty to eleven-ten. In between, staff will have lunch and we'll have collaboration time. And then PM sessions will be one to one-ten to three-thirty or three-forty. And then, just a little bit more about transportation. So like I said, if a student is attending, is supposed to attend Sand Lake, we will provide transportation from the home to Sand Lake and back. But like we said, we know that children attend daycare and so we would be figuring out which daycare they attend and trans, working with transportation to attend there. Our educational assistants at the midday will be riding home, because that will be a 4K-only bus. So we will have educational assistants ride on that bus. And then also to come to school at that one o'clock time, we'll have an educational assistant riding that bus as well. And then we're really hoping for our, our start to the school year, maybe for the first week or two, to have some educational assistants ride the regular route, just to make sure, because this is new for our 4K students, just to kind of get them acquainted. We've also, Sue's done a really nice job working with Dan and Andrea on coming up with strategies for maybe fifth-grade buddies, colored seats, different things like that. So we can make sure our 4K students feel welcome on the bus and that are at the front of the bus too.
So our next steps will be probably tomorrow. The incoming 4K parents for next year will receive a letter from Travis Udell sharing some information about 4K going into the elementary schools. And I know our district registrar has also worked on a survey for parents to complete. That will help us with our planning of knowing if they're hoping to transport their child so that they can attend their homeschool if daycare is elsewhere. So that's just the start of our planning process. I will also be contacting the childcare centers regarding this 4K transition. So all of that's still going to be happening in December. And then in January, when it gets closer to that actual registration, then we will send another registration letter out to families to tell them exactly how to get registered. And then registration and placement of the students.
Any questions? Any questions?
Is there any impact on staffing needs or staffing hours?
No, basic, the, the impact would be is that we would have a 4K staff teacher and EA located at each of our elementary schools and that. We currently have morning and afternoon sessions. It's just, that's going to be, once we get registrations and we can see where the placements would be, just kind of seeing how it balances out and then doing staffing accordingly, but knowing that we will have a a placement at each of our schools, if that makes sense.
And in addition to that, we have early childhood special education teachers and education assistants. So depending on what the needs are at each school, we'll figure out the schedule for those staff members as well.
So are we just looking at like one AM session and one PM session per building or are we anticipating?
We don't know yet. It will depend on the registration, but I guess that's what we're assuming right now, but things could change as well.
Is there a possibility that one school could not have as many kids? Would you still have it at that school, even if it was smaller and maybe there's a majority at another one? You'd still probably follow?
Yeah, the plan is to have at least a half a day session at every single school. So one teacher will be assigned and one EA to every school. So depending on enrollment, there might be one teacher that will have to travel to another school if there's higher numbers at another school. We're hoping not, but that's, we'll, we'll wait and see how it plays out.
I'm not sure if you guys will get other feedback or already have had some feedback, but I think, so right now, if kids attend a daycare, usually the bus will go pick up and bring back to the daycares. But now that's not going to be.
That's what we'll work through with the families. It might end up that they wouldn't be able to attend their homeschool, that they would be at in kindergarten possibly, to have that transportation. But we just need to see how many students in what schools they would be attending to determine those.
Yes, what I'm thinking of is, it sounds like kind of a double-faced topic, is that, so they can go to the school where the daycare is closest to, but right now, kids will be able to get bused to, the, the bus picks them up at their daycare and brings them to 4K and drops them back off at their daycare. So now, it just might, it sounds like it might present challenges with families in daycares having to figure out, okay, well now how are we going to get, am I understanding the transportation piece correctly?
No, so if, if we have a student who attends a daycare over in the Prairie View area, but Sand Lake is their homeschool, we would ask that they go to Prairie View for 4K and we would bus them to and from their daycare.
To and from, not just one way. I thought I was reading it was one way, so maybe I was misinterpreting that.
So the one way is they're going to ride on the regular elementary route. So in the morning, yep, the 4K kids will get on with the elementary students. So that's the one way, I guess, to think about it. And then, because right now, we have all separate 4K bus routes. So we have a whole fleet of buses that come in the morning and at, at the noon time and at the end of the day. So we're trying to reduce the, the number of routes that we have for transportation and so we're, we're putting 4K kids on that elementary route. And like I said, Sue's tried to work really, really hard at the end and Andrea will continue to do that to make that, you know, a safe and welcoming place for our youngest learners.
And that makes sense. It'll still, it'll just be a private, essentially, 4K bus taking them.
At the noon. Yeah. Yep.
Okay. That makes more sense. Thanks.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to item eight point six. Dr. Mueller and Executive Director of Finance and Operations Julie Holman will present the referendum resolution for approval on the January thirteenth consent agenda.
All right, good evening. Well, this fall, the community received a survey and that was to gather input regarding support for an operational referendum. After, we presented the results of that survey at a prior board meeting and after a thorough review of those results and then we had much conversations in a couple of different committees, along with getting more information on our district finances, because it's ever-changing and that. We're bringing a recommendation this evening to the board and I'm going to let our Executive Director of Finance and Operations Julie Holman start with just giving you the details around that.
Good evening. Members of the board that were on finance, some of this will look familiar to you, because it's a very similar presentation that you saw two weeks ago, revised for this evening's agenda item. And so we will talk through a little bit why a school referendum, remind the board and the public of the school tax rate and history. One slide, results from the community survey, and that was presented a month ago by School Perceptions. And then the recommended resolution and next steps.
Why is my school asking me to? Lots of school districts have to go to referendum in Wisconsin, not just for big ideas, but even to keep up with rising costs, sometimes just to fix a crumbling building. It's all because people in nineteen ninety-three were nervous about how much schools had to spend to keep up with the crazy, fast-changing technology. So to hold down property taxes, they made a law that froze how much funding schools could take in from their two biggest sources, local property taxes and the state. That law is still in place. It's called the revenue limit. The only way around the limit is for districts to get approval from their local community. And the way they ask for that approval is to put a question on a ballot in a referendum vote. Some referenda ask for a temporary boost, while others ask for a permanent increase. The revenue limits used to be adjusted for rising costs, but lately lawmakers have stopped doing that. So it feels as though the limit is shrinking every year. Lawmakers have also redirected some education funding, so it doesn't actually reach public schools. For these reasons, referenda have become a hot topic in our communities. The limits were a bit arbitrary to begin with. They were based on whatever your local school district happened to spend in the nineteen ninety-two to ninety-three school year. If you saved a lot of money that year, things could be harder for you to this day. What the revenue limits hold down is the combination of local property taxes and state aid. So even if the state does kick in more money to help schools, schools won't actually get any more funding unless they hold a successful referendum. We need to solve these problems. Powering education means charging up the next generation so they can be prepared to lead our future. Take a look at our ideas for redesigning the school funding system. Until we fix those issues, our schools are sometimes going to have to go to referenda for us to be prepared for our future.
So that helps explain the why behind it, because of the revenue limit that we talk about all the time. I wanted to share, I think some of this was, was talked about a little bit last time and in our committee level regarding the most recent twenty-twenty-four elections, just to get a sense of really how many public schools in Wisconsin are needing to go to referendum for both capital and operational needs. So in November's election, one hundred and seven out of one hundred and thirty-seven questions passed. Fifty-one of those were to issue debt, so a capital referendum, and thirty-nine were non-recurring operational with seventeen being recurring. Back in April, fifty-seven of ninety-three questions passed, nineteen to issue debt, twenty-seven non-recurring operational and eleven recurring. Sixty-one percent of those questions passed. There was also a few questions on the February election with one recurring and one non-recurring passing and two debt. Over fifty percent of the total questions in the last year, more than fifty percent were operational questions in the state of Wisconsin for public schools, just asking to help support public schools to a greater extent in their communities. I want to take a moment and aside, if I may, and try to help answer Patrick Barlow's inquiry from his public participation this evening. Thank you, Patrick, for joining us. So we did talk about recurring versus non-recurring within our Finance Committee and our Operational Referendum Committee. And of course, there's a lot of reasons to do either one. Historically, non-recurring passes at a greater rate than recurring and there may be all different reasons for that. The community itself may want the district to come back and justify the needs upon expiration, that they still need what they were asking for, if they need more than what they were asking for, just to, to continue to ask for that exceeding of the revenue limit for operational purposes. That was not the, the fact in this most recent one. Historically, it is, but this most recent one in November, recurring actually passed at seventy-seven percent with non-recurring passing at sixty-eight percent. But again, historically, that has not been the trend in passage of operational referendum. Other reasons are the variable landscape of school funding and the fact that we are entering a legislative session here in, in, in the spring down in Madison. And, you know, we're always waiting to see every two years what public schools get under the revenue limit formula. We intentionally, as you will see tonight, are proposing a five-year so that it would expire in advance of the next session, so after year one of the biennium, in two years, or two sessions forward. And then another reason is that if you recall, last time they went to session, they settled on an increase to the low revenue limit ceiling per pupil in the formula, which means they increased it from eleven thousand to, I don't have the numbers exactly in front of me, to eleven, three and a quarter. If you were already over eleven thousand per pupil, your base was already over that, based on your historical spending, based on operational referenda recurring that you've passed since the revenue limits were put into place. If you are already over that amount, you did not get the full three and a quarter per pupil. You only got the difference between whatever they raised the low revenue limit ceiling to and where you were at. So not everybody benefited from that, because when you pass a recurring referendum, it does go to base. So that was another conversation we had. That was a pretty hot topic two years ago. And we don't want to necessarily lose state funding under that low revenue limit ceiling if they are to increase the dollars. So there's a few different reasons. Of course, we all know that chances are we will still need operational revenue based on the history of funding schools and the, and the revenue limit within Wisconsin. But we just had some concerns about the likelihood of passing a recurring based on the historical trend of passing recurring versus non-recurring. And we really hope that this is a successful effort to pass what we are proposing this evening. So I don't know if that, that is getting at your questions at all, Patrick, but hopefully that's helpful in, in the fact that we were discussing that in committee level. So this slide really just kind of piggybacks on the video I just showed in regards to the funding formula and the revenue limit and how the school districts are capped under that limit. So we cannot just levy for whatever we need in the general fund, because it's capped by the revenue limit formula. And the legislative increases have not kept up with inflation in the per pupil amount over the past decade. There's been many years where we actually got zero increases. And just this last session, they passed three-twenty-five per year. And then, as you know, the governor vetoed that language to extend it for the next four hundred years at three and a quarter. So that might still be under conversation whether or not that stays on the books in, in the statute. But right now, we are planning for three-twenty-five added to the per revenue amount. But, right now, we are planning for 325 added to the per revenue amount under that limit formula. Something that we continue to share as we advocate for funding in Wisconsin is the fact that since it did not keep up with inflation, the average amount that school districts actually have lost out on in, in comparison to whether we, if, if the statute had retained the language to increase the per pupil amount with an inflationary clause, which it used to have, that's about 3,200 per pupil under the membership calculation. And for Holman, that's about 11.6 million dollars in our 2425 budget that we would have had, multiplied by a three-year membership average. So, that is a lot of money, and it clearly explains why a lot of districts are having to go out and ask for operational override to exceed their limits under the revenue limit. This is a reminder of a few slides that were in the budget hearing presentation on October 28th. The top chart just showing the very limited amount, portion of that summary budget for DPI summary format, and the fund balance summary. So, ending fund balance from last June 30th, plus revenues minus expenditures, basically showing that our expenditures exceed revenue by 2.46 million estimated for this year. And again, the update to the projected fund balance at the end of this fiscal year at 27.44%. That is estimated, and on, just a reminder, a portion of that is assigned and committed, and so it's not all available for us in the general fund for those operational expenses outside of assigned and committed. So, I also just wanted to highlight some of the reasons for that school referendum again. Some record inflation we've experienced in the last few years, our efforts to provide competitive wages and benefits and be a district that staff want to choose to come and work and stay with us. We do have slow enrollment decline. Again, years of minimal or zero increases to the per pupil increases from the state legislature, and that is impacting our future forecasts for deficit budget unless we make some changes or generate some new revenue. One thing I don't have on this slide also is the special education, increased costs, which seem to be going up higher than regular inflation. That does impact our general fund through that interfund transfer, and this last legislative session, they did increase the percentage reimbursement, but because the costs are going up so much in districts, that was a prorated reimbursement as well. So it's under 33% of eligible costs in special education, and that is a hot topic for the next session. It is common for individuals to misunderstand types of referenda, so I just want to share that this evening as well. We did see some of that feedback in the survey results that hinted at maybe some misunderstanding of what's the difference between operational and capital referenda. Straightforward operational referenda is in the general fund, Fund 10, and there's no interest payments because we're not bonding to borrow funds to pay for something within the general fund, and it is levied each year on either recurring or non-recurring authority. You're very familiar with capital referendum, the 2022 capital referendum for our current capital projects that are going on in the district. We bonded, a bond issue, we had a note issue, and we'll have another bond issue in January to complete that borrowing. There is interest paid back on those bonds, and you can borrow the money out to 20 years. The biggest difference is we cannot use those dollars on operational everyday costs, we cannot use them on salary and benefits, we cannot use them even for just general maintenance things that weren't part of the purpose of that question in 2022. And so we have to stick to the scope of the 2022 referendum, which was not salary and benefits of our staff and ongoing operational expenses in the general fund. This chart was also part of our October annual meeting, budget hearing, and school board meeting on October 28th. It's been updated to include that $6.94 school tax rate that was certified two years in a row, based on that early November tax certification to the municipalities that support the school district of Holman. And just a reminder on how the tax rate is calculated, we take the total certified tax levy divided by the equalized property valuation, TIF out, times 1,000, and we get $6.94, and that equates to $694 on a property, residential property, fair market value of $100,000. I promised you one slide from the community survey results, because I think this one is the most telling, and it's the one we looked at in our committee levels leading up to this evening's meeting. So, 44.8% was the weighted support for our definitely yes and probably yes for the first or base question within the survey, and that was 4.43 million on a non-recurring basis for 10 years with an estimated impact in the tax rate of $1.57. And so, reviewing this information, the committees provided feedback, and we came to the determination that we needed to not only lower the dollar amount, but we needed to lower the mill rate or the school tax rate impact to our voters and our residents that would be supporting this. And so, in doing that, and bringing together more information from PMA, our financial advisor, looking at how we will structure that debt in January, which impacts the tax rate as well, once we bring on the principal interest schedule for those bonds, and then adding in a potential referendum in April, we have come to a resolution recommendation for a question on the ballot, which is, shall the school district of Holman, La Crosse County, Wisconsin be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in Section 121.91 Wisconsin statutes by up to 3,850,000 per year commencing with the 2526 school year and continuing through 2930 on a non-recurring basis for the purposes consisting of operational and maintenance expenses, including for educational programming and employee compensation and benefits. The estimated increase cost converted to mill rate impact is 84 cents. A reminder to the board, when we do this, we are looking at very conservative impact, so that means that if we have any growth in the community, as far as equalized property valuation, TIF out, the likelihood of 84 cents being the impact is lower. PMA, our financial advisor typically uses 0% increase in property growth. Last year, our property growth increased by 4.57%, and about 50% of that was new construction, the balance was inflation. And so, the state, by the way, averaged last year was over 7%. So we actually, we're under the state average in property valuation increase. Anyway, we use 0% so that we are conservative in that calculation, so we aren't surprised by the impact when we bring this on to a tax levy if it is approved by our voters. So that would take the mill rate to an estimated $7.78. That's about 15 cents lower than the 2023 taxes payable in 2023 school tax rate that was certified in November of '22. That got shifted, sorry about that. It's all on one, one line on my paper. On January 13th, then, we're looking for board approval of the resolution. The resolution's currently being drafted, it's longer than just that question, if you recall, it's being drafted by our attorney as presented this evening, and that would be in front of you for the January 13th meeting. And then, the deadline to file the adopted resolution is January 21st, and then the general election is April 1st of 2025. Of course, between the adoption of the resolution and filing of it, and that April 1st, we would kick off a education campaign in February, sessions for conversation if the public wants to come in, you know, Facebook, websites, all of those various things we've done for referendum in the past. It's a little different, because I don't know that we've gone out for just a straight operational referendum for this purpose in the past. We've sort of tied it to a capital, or we tied it like entirely to technology, and so this is a little new for its purpose. We will also, we've already started on an FAQ for, or Q and A, I'll say, document to provide to the public as well, so they, we can try to answer all the questions possible before April 1. Any questions?
Any questions?
Can you just refresh my memory? The survey question that went out, what was that mill rate increase?
$1.57 was the first one, and then it went up from there. So the second one was if, the first, if you were to agree with the first one, they sort of built on each other, yep.
1.57 versus?
84 cents.
84 cents tonight. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
You said that's the equalized values with TIFs out, right?
Yes.
How many TIFs do we have right now?
Two. Two in the Village and one in Onalaska, city of Onalaska, and the Village one matures, Patrick can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's 2034, both of them? Pretty sure, 2034. So, when looking at that, it's almost too far out to bring it into impact calculations. Obviously, as we get closer to that year, you would want to include that, because the growth of that tax base that's in the TIF becomes part of property tax revenue for the school district of Holman as well. Yep.
Any questions?
I just want to say that I appreciate what you said at the end there, that there's going to be an opportunity for FAQs and public comments and things like that, I think that'll be really helpful.
Definitely, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
Motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on to the board debrief, I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. So tonight, we'll start with Kiven.
Okay, I'd like to start by thanking all the presenters presenting tonight, and also for the students for coming out and coming to the board. And then also want to say stuff that's happened, stuff that's going on at the school. So tonight's the band concert, Wednesday's early release, and Wednesday's also the grand opening of the Blizzard Boulevard from 6 to 8 p.m. Friday, December 13th is the choir concert at 7:00. Saturday, December 14th is the show choir brunch with the stars. Sunday, December 15th is the orchestra concert at 2:00 p.m., and school play was last Thursday. Winter wishes have returned, which is really great, since they haven't been at school last year. The winter assembly is December 20th, and winter break is December 21st to January 1st.
All right, thank you.
Chris.
I just want to thank the, the student store and the, and the DECA officers for coming out, it's always great to hear their presentation, we've heard it several times now about that, and the good causes that they're funding out there, and then the impressive work that the DECA organization does within our district is always very impressive how large and involved the student body is in that program. We did have a policy meeting on the 4th of, this month. We will bring, be bringing forward six policies in the 8,000 series, primarily around food service and transportation. They were just basically wording change, definition changes, nothing really impactful, just statutory stuff. So those are in your packets to review, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Lindsay.
Yeah, I just shared everything that's been said. Thank you for the presentations, you know, it takes courage to come out and present anything really in front of this group, so congrats to everybody that, and all the hard work that's gone into this, and encourage everybody to go out to the store.
All right, Bridgette.
Yeah, first, I want to say thank you to Patrick Barlow for always insightful comments and questions that you bring to the board, it's very appreciated. Looking forward to the grand opening of the Blizzard Boulevard. And then, just want you to know, we're going to be on break in a couple of weeks, and I so appreciate just that, there's been really hard work that's gone on the last several months in all of the committees. I think of the, the DEI work that's been completed, this work on this resolution, and, I mean, we just have really big and amazing projects happening in this district, so I hope everyone has a very restful holiday break. Thank you.
All right, Barb.
I would just like to say thank you for, to Julie for taking the feedback from that referendum survey from our community members and reworking it, so thank you for all the time you put into that.
Thank you.
All right, and I'd like to thank all the presentations, especially the student groups that were here tonight, as well as Julie, and I thank Patrick for speaking earlier today as well. I think that's all I have there. Moving on to item 10.3, the board has been provided with notes from the September 23rd finance and the October 2nd policy committee meetings, please take a look at those. Moving on to item 10.4, the board has been provided with six policies that the policy committee recommended for consideration. If a board member has any questions regarding a policy, they should reach out to Dr. Mueller prior to the January 13th meeting, where the policies will appear on the consent agenda for approval. Item 10.5, all board members have received a link to the board's self-evaluation, please ensure that the evaluation is completed by December 20th. Also, if you need assistance accessing the evaluation, please reach out to Stacy Lockington. Our upcoming board meeting schedule, on January 13th, we will have our next board meeting at 7:00 p.m. On January 15th, we will have the refresh of our strategic plan. On January 22nd through the 24th, we'll be at the state convention in Milwaukee, and then on January 27th, we have a finance committee meeting at 5:00 p.m., followed by a board meeting at 7:00 p.m. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Barb has second. To adjourn the meeting at 8:07 p.m. Motion carried, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.